Come on, that well, that defeats the whole.
I was gonna say like that just.
And I couldn't believe it.
It's so funny, I'm sitting on the couch with the dog and I'm like.
Let me know when we're starting. Okay. Alright, good evening, everybody. This is the Town of Fairford Conservation Commission acting as inland wetlands agency, December fourth. Um, Lucas Thomas, Daphne Bowen, Jay Fain, Peter Hood, Kate Mahoney, Ted Luke Singer, Diane Saunders are all here. I will point Diane as a full member for tonight. And we have an inland wetlands agency meeting number six twenty twenty four. Um, any comments, corrections?
Yeah, just on the second page.
Okay.
My name and Jay's name are kind of co-mangled there.
Oh, sorry.
Second paragraph. I think that was being smarter, certainly wasn't me, so.
We know that.
Yeah, same.
Wait, can you, I'm sorry, can you repeat to me?
See the third paragraph down that says Peter Fain?
Ah, oh gosh.
I have no such alter ego. I deny it.
Did you second it? Is that, did I get it mixed up that way? No, that was just a statement, that's.
Yeah, I did, that's probably why.
Oh, okay.
It's not a bad name, it's just, you know.
With those, uh, any other comments or corrections?
No.
All right, um, I'm supposed to accept that one. Ooh, then, and how many seconds? Then there's an inland wetlands agency meeting number twentieth, twenty twenty four. There's no comment.
Yeah, um, I mean, that one, reading it, it sort of implies that the commission has a generally positive reaction to your application. But, um, I had expressed some concerns about the proposal and that wasn't mentioned in the minutes. And I understand that the minutes don't necessarily repeat what everybody says, but I, I think in general, if one or more commissioners has some significant concern, um, that that probably should be included.
Okay, so you'd like for your, uh, is that, you have significant concerns, you'd like that?
Well, I mean, you know, like, I brought up a couple items, you could just say that I expressed concerns about removal of most of the U R A and also the potential impact on wildlife. And that would cover it, I think.
Okay. Where, where do you want me to put that?
That would be under the public hearing beginning at eight fifteen P M somewhere in there, which is part of the public hearing on this.
Oh, because that was a special, sorry.
Yeah.
Block, yeah.
And I'm sorry, did we find just repeating that that, I said, uh, Diane expressed concerns about?
About, um, the removal of most of the U R A and also the potential impact on wildlife.
Okay, um, with that, uh, addition correction, motion to approve those minutes. And everybody second, and Kate second, very good. Um, Alex, yep, okay. Moving on to public hearings, number one. Commuted W P dash twenty four dash zero zero three seven. And Miquitina, twenty five sixty Congress Street, map one fifty three parcel one A. Relocation of a pipe to water course and construction of an addition with associated site work within the area. Vision may be made if the hearing is completed or the hearing may be continued. The original thirty five day public hearing timeframe to complete the hearing ends September thirteen, twenty twenty four. Sixty five day time extension may be provided by the applicant. Further public hearing continuation since January seventeenth, twenty twenty five were possible. A potential continuation date is January eighth, twenty twenty five, if the hearing is completed. The agency shall make a decision within thirty five days. Commissioners eligible to vote, Daphne Bowen, Richard Boucher, Jay Fain, Peter Hood, Kate Mahoney, Ted Luke Singer, Diane, Diane Saunders. And, um, I wasn't present on November sixth, twenty twenty four, but I did review the record, uh, and, and the video. So, um, putting on the record that I have, uh, used. And staff recommends approval with conditions. So, uh, we are still in a public hearing, so there you go, on, on screen. Thanks, Alexandra.
Oh, you're very welcome. Uh, so thank you very much, uh, for guiding me to this Zoom meeting. I will quickly, uh, share, uh, my presentation, just to go back, I just want to make sure that this is the presentation I, for that one, okay. Um, so, um, we were, uh, delayed, uh, last time around because, uh, we're seeking the review of the engineering department. Uh, in the original meeting, the commission has some issues with, uh, some concerns about the drainage from the, um, from the addition, which is being proposed here. Uh, the addition is outside of the upland review area, but the size triggered the concern. And as you can see, uh, we, uh, increased the number of the inland infiltration system, which originally there were fourteen units. And, uh, the revised plan shows twenty units. The revised plan was, uh, reviewed by the engineering department and even though, uh, their comments were not ready for the previous meeting, uh, they actually gave us, uh, blessings, their blessings, uh, this time around. Um, so we're okay with engineering, site engineering, and, uh, the other concern, uh, was the, uh, planting plan and the, uh, mitigation. So this was the original planting plan, which shows two trees and, uh, several shrubs in between, uh, mitigating the area uh, next to the, uh, offsite wetland. Uh, Tim, uh, had recommendations that we should add additional, uh, six trees because we were removing five, uh, all of them were from outside of the, any, uh, buffer areas or upland review areas. Um, and, uh, we have, uh, six evergreens shown here to mitigate the area of the pond, which is offsite. Uh, this is our property line. So we're mitigating this offsite wetland and we're also mitigating, uh, this wetland, um. And this, uh, this is the revised plan and, uh, the, uh, additional efforts were made, um, towards the approval.
Okay, thank you. Any further information, Alexandra?
No, not at all, and just like to, uh, uh, recap, we are being sixty feet away from this wetland. The pipe is not functioning right now, um, and we are being seventy feet away from this wetland.
Good, great, thank you. Um, any other folks that are here that would like to speak in support of this application? Any other folks that are online that would like to speak in support of this application? Any folks that are here that like to speak in, um, opposition to this application? The folks that are online that like to speak in opposition to this application? Uh, Commissioner before, did you have any further questions or anything for Alexandra? No. Um. Want to close it or keep?
Yeah, we should close, I like a motion to close.
Okay. Commissioner Fain's made, made a motion to close the, and Commissioner Owen seconds the motion to close the public hearing for this. Okay. Moving on to number two under public hearings, W P dash twenty four dash zero one two seven. Carrera Engineering, one two three seven Stratfield Road. Twenty six. Forty six parcel forty A. Removal of existing failing retaining wall and construction of a new modular block wall within the area. Vision may be made if the hearing is completed or the hearing may be continued. The original thirty five day public hearing timeframe to complete the hearing ends January eighth, twenty twenty five. Time extension may be provided by the applicant. Further public hearing continuation to much force since twenty twenty five are possible. Potential continuation date is January eighth, twenty twenty five. Hearing is completed, we shall make the decision in thirty five days. Staff recommends approval with conditions, including removal of unauthorized stones on stream banks.
Hello, good evening. Um, my name is Jim Rotundo, I'm a licensed professional engineer with Carrera Engineering. Uh, here tonight representing M and T Bank, uh, with this wall replacement project, also with me is Bill Fain, William Fain and his associates, who is our project soil scientist and also served as the site monitor, uh, during the installation of the wall. As you're aware, this, uh, project started with an emergency order, uh, to repair a, or replace a failing, uh, retaining wall. The existing retaining wall was removed and it was replaced with a ready rock, uh, modular block wall system. Project is substantially complete, uh, with some final restoration that needs to be done with the islands on either side of the parking area. Uh, potentially all the work that comes with the wall and, and the water course itself has been completed. As noted in the report, uh, there was somewhat unauthorized stone that was installed on the other side. Uh, stream bank, uh, at the bank of, uh, the water course here, which we are, uh, prepared to address in conditions of approval. Who has anything to, uh, to add to that, we'd be happy to answer any question. Nope.
Okay. Questions?
Um, I just wanted to bring forth, uh, a procedural issue that we learned about at the AccuWIC, um, conference, um, a week ago. It turns out that by Connecticut general statute, there's no such thing as an emergency authorization. Um, so interesting, um, it's actually the way that this is tested, that we handle an emergency situation is as a violation. Um, so just procedurally going forward, um, Janet Brooks was the one that brought that forward and, uh, a couple other, uh, grants and, uh, Judge Berger was there and they were all discussed, so just so that we have that in mind going forward. Um, and it's, I, I just wanted to bring that forth, this is a procedural issue, but I don't really have any, um, issue at this point.
If we could discuss that, uh, as on.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I know it's unauthorized, I just wanted to kind of bring that up, we can discuss it further.
Yeah, okay. Um. Questions, comments for the applicant or their representative commissioners? All right, um. Is anybody here that would like to speak in support of this application? In mind that would like to speak in support of this application?
Are you talking about the, um, work that was done at the M and T parking lot on Stratfield Road?
Yes.
Yes. I'd, I'd like to say a couple of words.
In support?
Not really.
Okay, so then you'll, that's the next.
Have my chance after?
Yep, right, actually right now, I was just gonna announce, anybody would like to speak in opposition to this application? Uh, feel free to come on up and tell us why you're opposed to it.
Okay, sure. Um, I'm nothing prepared, but my name is Jane Roseman and I'm on the board at Dogwood Green. Um, which, yeah, yeah, which is, um, runs, or, you know, part of our, the runoff goes into our property. And we had just finished a project, uh, that we paid over four hundred thousand dollars for. And you could imagine our surprise. And, you know, quite frankly, we really didn't know about this project until we, you know, looked at, you know, saw it being done. And so within days of the work, our, our pond, uh, had, it was dirty and oily and around the side, and we had, we, we, we just had tons of contaminated soil removed from our, our, um, pond. Uh, so it was clean. And that contaminant, contaminated soil actually was a lot of, was runoff from Stratfield Road. We cleaned it up and we, lo and behold, we turned around and our pond is dirty. There was an oily substance on top and around the sides, you could see the, um, prior to the work done, the, uh, you could see the rocks in the shallow part. And it was all. And it was all murky and ugly and disgusting and I had pictures. I don't have pictures of pond, my my uh the president does, but I have pictures of our street, the stream that runs off going down. And it's still brownish color and like I said, hey, we had, we had no idea this work was gonna be going on. And and perhaps we would have put off the project if that was the case. But you know, within two weeks, this is, this work was being done. What happened? What, where was the communication? I know our president did write to somebody from the on the commission. And asking for an explanation. I don't think she got anything back, uh Amy Vanderbees.
I'm not sure. I don't, I don't think I saw anything, but if it's uh in the record, they.
So gee guys, I mean, when was, when was this depo- when was this decided on, this work?
The applicant. Two things are occurring. One, you're here for their main application. Uh uh a few weeks back.
Mm-hmm.
They also came in as an emergency application. Um and that was. The things that they did were approved by this commission. So right now, they they have all their information provided to us. About what they're gonna do, most of it was already.
Well, it's done already, no? I mean, it's just pretty much done.
Yep. Oh, it's not fully done. There are some things, um if you notice, if you heard, they were also talking about these little stones and rocks that were unauthorized, so. You bringing up this information will be something we can discuss with them.
Okay.
Okay.
Um we also had the the water tested and we haven't gotten the results back. Uh as soon as we saw that, you know, that there was a change in the pond.
That would be great if you can provide those uh test results to us, cuz we don't, most likely not gonna make any decision tonight. There's more time.
Okay, sure. So you you suggest we go on with that, cuz the water was take uh, the sample was taken and I'm.
Yes.
I think it was, it was gonna be tested.
Okay, that would be great. That'd be some information that we would like to see.
About pictures, uh would would you like us to?
Anything you'd like to give us would be helpful.
Who do we send, who do we send that to?
You can go down to town hall and talk to Tim Bishop here's our director or Sarah.
Yeah, yeah.
Um and they'd be happy to help you and direct you and how to either provide it directly to them or how to scan and upload or how.
Okay, so we'll send you some more information.
Yeah, that'd be fun.
And photos of uh different times, like a week apart would also be helpful or um just because water is murky doesn't mean that it's contaminated.
Right.
Um so.
But there was a, there was something on top of it.
That, right, and that's something we found out, I think, last year or the year before. It looks like it's oily, but it could be a a a ca- it's not a chemical, it's it's a um metal.
Mm-hmm.
Magnets.
Right, what was it?
Magnets.
Magnets, so, right, so that was new to me, so you know, it could be that, you know.
Magnets, magnets.
Yeah, I went to a site and I was like, hey, there's, you know, there's oil that came out of the ground, call the, and then they got put in my place.
Yeah.
Sarah.
Yeah, we've both.
Yeah.
Sarah did respond, uh okay, that was certified.
Yeah, the two times we got calls, I did go out there, both times I met um someone from Bill's office out there. The first time Bill had stopped out.
Oh. Okay.
The second time too. Um you know, so we made some changes to their soil and erosion controls. By the time we got out there. You could still see a little murkiness, like a little turbidity in the pond, but it was flowing pretty clearly. Through um through that, the site on Stratfield Road at that point. When they called about the oil, I didn't see any evidence of oil when I was out there at the pond. They had just paved the parking lot. At the bank, so I don't know if there was something with that that had gone through, but again, everything was clear flowing by the time.
Yeah.
I was out there that day.
Well, give us your test results, that would be very helpful.
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Listening, because you could imagine, four hundred, that's a lot of money.
Oh absolutely. Yeah.
And it was a beautiful, probably, a lot of us were out at the project. It was a beautiful project.
Have you seen it? Oh, you should come down, yeah, it's beautiful. Um you know, so.
Yeah, but I would be tempted to knock somebody in the head cuz those apartments have such a nice view. It's like, come on, I want one of these.
Yeah.
Don't invite me on that property.
Very, very lucky to to live there. I mean, they don't look like anything on the outside, but once you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh keep the public hearing open?
Yeah, I think so too. Yeah, because we need to take this information in.
Yeah, so I would make up the motion.
No, no, just it's an open, we won't close it.
It's not closing, yeah.
Yeah, it'll stay open. Um so um. Anybody else here that'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Anybody online that would like to speak in opposition to this application? Commissioners, any questions, comments that you'd like to bring up? Nope, thanks guys, well, keep it going.
Thank you very much. See you next month.
Yeah. All right, moving on. Um before you go, uh is there, is there anything that can be done about those stones now? I mean, we're still under an emergency thing, so.
I think, yeah, I think they submit uh, I don't know if you're working on something for the other side of the bank now.
Uh no, I just reviewed the staff uh reports and saw that, but we could start getting going, something going on now.
Yeah. Yeah, cuz that would be the only, only thing to address it.
I I'd like, I prefer to get started under the emergency part, so that at least you can do it, only because that could be harmful.
Yeah.
If there's a big rain event or something that could wash it all down, I I.
Tonight.
Right, so is that?
So I don't know, is that, do you want, I, if it's removed now, I don't know if there's erosion issues or.
Yeah, how do we do that? How do we stabilize it or how do we, what do?
Probably should, we should put a planting plan together for you, cuz once it's removed.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
You might decide to wait at this point till the spring, then leave the stone in place to protect that slope.
Stabilize it.
And then come in and remove it.
Is there any, can there be something in there, you know, some design for, I wanna say armoring, but some. Larger boulders, at least. At the toe of the slope, is up.
To we, to leave or?
Yeah, cuz that's the thing, you can see they.
Where some larger ripper? It came up a couple of feet, but for whatever reason, I don't know, they were being extra neat. They went like ten feet up the slope. Um so.
I think it's.
I think it's a good idea to leave some along the base as a, yeah.
Something so that if it, if it doesn't kind of fall on upon itself and then go into there and and you know, um I don't know.
Do I like a modified ripper for some stones and some plants in between it?
Yeah.
Down, yep.
Yeah, but again, it would be better to do it in the spring.
Except at this point.
So you can plant it as soon as you take out, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, all right, well, it was just a thought, so. We've demotion in this way. Okay, yeah, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to five applications for receipt. Number one is WP dash twenty four dash zero one three seven Calerno. Eight seven eight Panfield Road, map one thirty nine, parcel one ninety four, construction of a new single family dwelling. With swimming pool and associated site improvements within a regulated area. Last day for public hearing or decision is February seventh, twenty twenty five. Last regular meeting prior February fifth, twenty twenty five. Staff recommends tabling, pending departmental review and scheduling public hearing for January eighth or February fifth, twenty twenty five. And. Put that down for January eighth.
Yeah.
Um only have two here, so we can get through those. And the second one is WP dash twenty four dash zero one three four, the Huntington Company, eleven sixty three Sasko Hill Road. Map two thirty nine, parcel seven B, construction of a single family residence with twin pool, patios, retaining wall and associated site improvements within a regulated area. Same last day for public hearing, the decision is February seventh, twenty twenty five, last regular meeting prior is February fifth, twenty twenty five. Staff recommends tabling, pending departmental review and scheduling public hearing for January eighth or February fifth. Um let's do January eighth for that as well.
I've got a question for staff. Uh with that, the wetlands offsite, i- i- are all the activities a hundred feet away?
Um, I know, cuz I got the. It's a very large.
Because of the scale of the project.
That goes up into um. So all of the activities are outside of the hundred foot, but it goes into, there's the easement here. That has the asset touching trust um agreement, part of the drainage system is within that, which is allowed per the agreement. But due to the significant amount of work, we thought it would still.
Just uh. Okay, it's fine. Rather err on the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Similar to the last one on Sasko.
There's a lot of regrading on this, okay.
Uh moving on to six applications for discussion. Number one. WP dash twenty two dash two fifty eight Pierfield Housing Corporation, nine eighty High Street, map seventy seven, parcel three forty. Construction of forty unit assisted multifamily affordable housing development within a regulated area. On receipt of the memorandum of decision from the court dated September nineteenth, twenty twenty four, the agency should discuss the approval and related condition. Staff recommends approval with conditions. I thought, I thought we did this right, but I guess we didn't with conditions, correct?
Yes, we wanted you to make sure the conditions were.
Yeah. Documents in your packet.
Yep.
Any uh comments, commissioners?
I looked at through the, you know, briefly, it's a very long resolution, um but seems to cover everything. Obviously, the direction of this is. So I guess the party by the court, I thought we were applying aamic, emotional, adoptive resolution.
Okay, anybody second that? Diane seconds, all in favor? All right.
Wanna discuss first, I just.
Hold hold, hold the motion, did you?
Accept the resolution.
Uh I did have.
Okay.
Sorry, that I wanted to make, um I just gotta find where to put my notes down. I'll make a point in between. It's very thorough, very well done. But not aggressive enough.
Okay.
From my perspective with respect to the lighting being dark skies compliant, I'd like to go a step further and have the lighting be um. Smart lighting, which is appropriate light level. Um it's a step beyond dark skies compliant fixtures. Since they're adjacent to a wetland and there's also an easement. Um that's the quick place, I'm just trying to find my notes, that I put some movement in. I wanted to ask for, you know, to see if, what you guys thought. I don't know, violation. Uh here it is, okay. Uh item number eight, consider incorporation of dark sky, approve lighting design and lighting plan as it relates to adverse impacts. And I will get driven um wildlife, um adhere to the five principles of smart lighting. As identified by the International Dark Skies IDA. Um I'd also like to ask that they refrain from or do not use any pesticides or fertilizers. On the uh property that is adjacent to the wetland, um for protection of wildlife in the wa- in the uh wetland area.
How about salt?
I'm sorry, how about salt? In the winter, that we discussed that during, was one of my principal objections. Uh I don't find it logical that they're gonna say salt's not gonna enter the wetland. No, I I I would agree with that as, you know, anything that isn't naturally occurring.
Guys, I I do appreciate the efforts, but I'm not sure if we can add anything.
Yeah.
So we were, we denied it, they appealed it, it went to a court and the judge said approve this thing.
Well, that's, that's why I'm asking.
So I I really do applaud the efforts. I don't think we can do anything on this. We 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 gotta move forward.
So where do the specific conditions for approval come from?
But but no, that's, that's not, not there yet.
That, that is something that was discussed prior when we had that. We just didn't vote on it appropriately after the judge's decision. Right. So it it was denied, but if we had approved it, the conditions would have been there already, but we didn't approve it.
Okay. Oh.
So we're, we can't really change anything.
So it's, all right, so it's nothing that's um.
It's simply.
It's part of the record, but it's not anything that's.
It's just a pro forma, so we can just get them their permit, all right.
But since you're talking about it, there's always the hope that.
Always added.
It's out there.
Yes, it's out there, it's, it's a record, and on the next ones, we'll do more.
You can change it, consider. You said it's considered, still, what was, what did you want?
It would.
Uh consider uh adopting the five principles of smart lighting as identified.
You always say considering, yeah.
Consider it considered, sure.
Oh, since it's a considered one, we just add that.
So add in.
Right.
Add a.
Consider the five.
And use our five principles.
So. Chemical.
Banning the use of chemo, especially salt because of sa- safety issues is is is, I think that's risky.
God, very far.
Yeah, but pesticides and pesticides.
Sand is a forceful.
Yeah, you saw, stand there at all because it's all uh previous favor and you can, and you're banned.
Right, and, and that clocks it up.
It's like we're talking about.
So would staff um consider making um. Including uh the limitation of use of pesticides and pesticides as a sort of pro forma in your um staff recommendations or. At least consider them for the applications in the future.
More to consider.
Moving forward, yes, this one, because the. Yeah, no, I mean, moving forward, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, that's, that's a great, that's a step in the right direction.
Yep.
For some of this, thank you.
But so are we adding in a condition, consider five principles?
Uh. Yeah.
I I don't think we're, we're just gonna adopt uh.
Yeah, we can't, you know, and can't have.
Change that one, sky and or, and or five principles.
Right.
Right, with smart lighting. That would be.
It's on the slide, just got the principles on it, right? It's good to say out loud, so we're.
I know, if that's.
That would be, there was a motion.
Approved.
To approve.
I didn't hear it.
You didn't hear it, okay, good. So you didn't hear it, it didn't happen.
I have a motion, yeah.
Uh I make a motion to approve with the rec- recommendations to consider as uh. What if I make?
The the five principles are responsible outdoor lighting, it, the lighting is useful, is targeted, should be only focused where it's needed. Uses the minimum light levels necessary for safety, is controlled, should be used at times that are useful, using either motion detectors or timers. Um and color, uh use more yellow light, so yellow light is more uh adaptable to wildlife than blue, blue white light.
Okay.
Those are the five principles.
Five principles.
Okay, so I can put in there.
Just the five principles, yeah.
The five principles, okay, thank you.
Um anybody second that motion by Commissioner Fain?
I second.
Cause you would have made. Seconds it. All in favor? Cool?
Who approves?
Who who approves?
I saw it.
Two, all right, everybody except Dabney.
Okay.
Okay, Dabney, are you uh.
Are you standing or are you?
Standing, or are you voting against?
I'm voting against.
Okay, very good.
There's gotta be somebody.
I know.
It's not me.
All right, uh all, um so it's all good, okay, we did that one, we gotta move on. Cue number two. Number two is WP dash twenty four dash zero zero five nine Norwood one twenty eight, map two forty six, parcel five C. Wetland restoration within regulated area, the public hearing closed November sixth, twenty twenty four, the agent still make a decision within thirty five days. Within thirty five days or before December eleventh, twenty twenty four. Commissioners elbow to vote, Dabney, Richard, Case, Ed, Diane. On eleven, six, twenty four, I was not there, but I used the record um and viewed the exhibit. Uh the staff does not recommend approval. Okay, commissioners, discussion?
I I I I agree with staff, I don't recommend approval, especially especially given. At the last meeting that we had on this uh matter. At last minute, and when we asked them about the specific notes on the plan, they they basically said those are in error, they're scrupulous area, we don't stand by that. I have no idea what we'd be, we would be approving at this point. Um I've asked them about the letter they uh added in terms of. Uh maintain, they said they would establish a meadow, but then they act right off of that, oh, we'll be mowing that and it'll be up to owner to do whatever they want. I found that, you know, throughout this whole process, the applicant, like failure has been uncooperative. They've gone through at least three councils and um they've done everything they can to stonewall this application. They have not been cooperative in the least. They have not addressed our concerns, they have not addressed the legal aspects of the conservation easement. And in fact, they tried to say it didn't even, wasn't even uh enforceable. Um and for those reasons, I have many more reasons, I don't know if we wanna keep iterating them. I think we should deny this application and accordance with um. Just case law. Uh case law, when these type of situations, we should give some specific direction of what we wanna see in terms of uh that what we wanna see come back to us.
Okay. Any other comments or concerns from other commissioners?
I support everything that Jay just said.
Okay.
I I I completely agree, I think that it's a very um back and forth, very confusing, I don't actually even know what. I agree with Jay, I don't know what we would be approving at this point.
Well, having come late to this conversation, so I wasn't part of the initial fireworks that took place, um.
That says a lot, by the way.
Yeah.
It shows how long it's been.
You know, I know.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't around for the initial either.
It 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 seems to me that the crux of this thing is these people wanna be able to cut their stupid lawn, right?
Meeting I attended. No, it's not, it's not.
Well, no, it's more, no, 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 it's a lot.
That is part of it, I I do, I I thought I saw that they they walked that back though at one point, um so. That may have been said, but I think that they they did acquiesce and say, yes, there's a um the easement is there and we can't mow.
Okay.
Uh no, they 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 said the easement is there, but they specifically said at least at every different, and they had the right to mow it.
No, but they.
Right.
I think that for me, that the.
Right. That's why, that's why it seems to me that that's that's wrong.
No, and that's that's.
I think part of it.
Part of it, but um and and you know, if they had come up with, you know, I I think we would have been reasonable if they had come up with a reason of why they wanted to mow and what areas they wanted to mow. But not just blanket mow the whole, the whole easement, um I I felt that, you know, the the, I think land was wasn't as um robust enough to address the. Significance of this violation, the plants are way, your Home Depot sized plants are way too small. Um they haven't addressed the the extent of the appu- of the activities they perform. They did activities after the stop work was issued and they have not iterated it, said which what those activities were and why they did that. And in those activities, I think, they need to prove that they have no impact or remove those from the site. I think that includes some walkways and some pool decking, they're talking about adding cold tech drainage structures into the conservation easement, which. I don't believe is appropriate for that, um especially without any mitigation, so there's just, it's just wide open as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah. You were gonna say something.
You know, I'm not an attorney, but my, I have brothers who are attorney, my sister-in-law, like, you know, the fact that they submitted something with a with a with a scribner error and then saying, well, just ignore that. I mean, that's not clean, like, I I don't, I I feel like that's, that that means nothing then, if you're saying that to ignore something, then I'm gonna ignore the whole, I don't understand how.
Well, I don't know how we would know which ones are.
Which one, which which is it, what what is it, and it was never really, was this just this area was a scribner area, you know, I I I just felt like, and I and I agree, I think that there. This idea of this meadow, but then it was these aerial footage show showing that this was a lawn in nineteen seventy-five and it just got very confusing.
If we were to, like Commissioner Fain said, give them a little bit more direction on what we want.
Yeah.
But I it can't, I personally, I don't feel it, you know, they they did come closer, they did get the, so if we were to do something like that, I would. Hope we would take into consideration a a fee waiver, they already paid twenty thousand dollars for this.
I I I I I you know, this has been terrible, this has been over and over and it's two years and.
I understand.
They defied the the staff, they defied the stop work order, we spent so much time on this, I feel that it I feel that it's almost that they have to. Um pay the additional fee to, so that they they have a reason to actually do what they said to do, I think it's.
I would agree with that.
I think they should pay the fee.
Well, just to play devil's devil's advocate, that money could go into.
The plants.
The plants, I mean, if if the goal here is to restore the property as much as possible, then we need to give them incentive, and I'm just playing devil's advocate here, I'm.
Restore. So.
Certainly, trying to convince anybody, but.
I'm. Yeah, I would say, okay, the planting plant, like you said, it can't be Home Depot plants and they have to be minimum size of this, and if you do that, you know, it it, you know, that.
Well, then I did ask, I I look, I'm gonna tell you, Jay's covered a lot, I have three pages, I was gonna read it, I think I'm gonna spare you all, maybe I'll just um. Submitted by paper, but you know, that was one thing I offered Land Tech the opportunity to define how they establish criteria for a plant. The response I got was, you know, and I said, I wanna talk about quadratic quadratic mean diameter and the basal area, and what I got was, it was vague, it was kind of combative. And it was just not persuasive, and I I did hear at one point stem count, I'm not interested in stem count, that's what we're going back to Home Depot, anybody can do stem count. Uh I just feel that the entirety of the presentation at this point, my problem is I don't trust anything I've been given because.
At this point, there's a record.
Yeah.
So please, let's put what we would like to see before us.
Right.
Um you know, I'm I'm, I know it's for discussion, but I kinda read the tea leaves here where it's gonna go, um so what would, what would be.
Satisfying.
Satisfying in the next application if there were to be.
What I need, what I need personally, is I need stand density, I I need some information there, I, like I said, I'm simply not interested in a step count. And I heard one gallon plants and I'm done with that, I I'm not listening anymore.
You're looking at girth and chest level.
Because it doesn't.
Two different uh, you know, it's the one gallon plants or the herbaceous layers, the, and then there's the trees, which I think with two two inch caliber. Uh maybe off to four inch caliber and some of the trees would be appropriate, so the larger, um. One of the things that I felt, you know, if you look at the plans that were prepared, and by the way, um there was a disconnect between the original. People played them and the people presented them, but the setting that aside, you know, they showed the circle of the size of the canopy, that wasn't, isn't the size that would be planted. You know, it's it'd be.
Misleading.
Couple of feet around it, so it's it's misleading that to look at the plan and say, these are, these trees are gonna cover that area, so it should be, I think. Um the graphics should be appropriate in terms of what would be happening, where the trees are gonna go, the trees should be spread, I think, much further out on the site. Trees out throughout the property, I believe that uh we should have, I think that conservation easement definition. Is, what's the right word? And we have to take that into consideration when it was done the first time, but I believe that we should leave room along the driveway so they can maintain the driveway and mow that area. And then there should be a split rail fence and then um.
No mow.
No mow after that, you know, it's inappropriate, that was the idea of the original conservation easement, and I think there were wetlands there that had been damaged. Wetlands that we show shown once after the fact, we don't show them the ones before the fact. Um I'd like to see the, you know, the justification of why the pool um. The pool deck was expanded um a- after the fact and after we issued the stop work order, and if it can't be, you know, if they have to mitigate that. The stormwater quantity by putting activities in the conservation easement, then let them remove the extra pool, that's. Um those are the, you know, those are the things, and I think the planting should be, the density should be also increased maybe two times, and the and the um. Especially the trees, Tim, and then Sarah, and then also plants minimum of three gallon.
And then and then ground cover, native ground cover that doesn't require mowing.
Native n- native meadow uh species.
Edge could be blocks, I don't.
Uh there's, you know, plenty of natural of of herbaceous plant mixes that they could specify, I think they actually had one on the plan. Uh in in one area that could be extended to area of the property.
I think for me, the the real problem I have is that, you know, when you remove the canopy, the wetland is changed and you can't get that back.
Well, you're not gonna get that back.
And that's part of why the stem count is here. Probably why, oh oh during this, I was I was getting tired of being told about compromise and and agreements and uh let the homeowner do what she, you know, it was a lot of. I don't wanna be told, this this body is not, we're not required, we're not here to compromise, we we.
Well, I think we we we.
We gotta work to a solution, so.
That's well, that's where I would, I would say, all of these things are wonderful, I would also add um suggest that they file a fee waiver application.
Yeah.
And at that point, when it comes up, at least it's in front of us.
Yeah, they certainly could do.
And just to, just as, just to modify a little what Peter said, I think that, I think that this commission has shown that.
Yeah.
There can be a a a certain amount of reasonable um compromise, but when we start off with an egregious violation, it doesn't really leave.
Yeah.
But I. Once, once we, you know, once we show that we're willing to do any compromise and we we get pushed back all the way against the wall, then I think, what's what's the incentive to compromise? I I don't think there was, it was you compromise and I'll do what I want, I'm not gonna compromise on my app, I'm just gonna compromise on your app, that's not, that's not how you negotiate, that doesn't work well for me.
True, I also think the behind the scenes emails are intended to intimidate.
I don't care what you did, but anything about behind the scenes, you know, and I'm not gonna get intimidated, but I had I had somebody standing in the radio office, right in the audience, talking to me directly, which is inappropriate. That's, you know, that's, I'm doing my job as commissioner.
Well, I I think asking you for ex parte communication was inappropriate too.
Right.
You know, there's a lot of that, and that's part of what's making me uneasy about the totality of this, I can't, I understand I can't trust the applicant, but I can't trust her agents or her council, that's.
There's an application before us, we've had a discussion, we've had um suggestions of what we'd like to see, uh and part of that is we don't see it now. So um.
You know, I also wanna see the, you know, some of the other, and some of the going through, you know, removing the drainage that they added, um. You know, they they offered that, but I wanna make sure we iterate that, they have to remediate the work they did on the neighboring property. Um and you know, and we do do wanna see some kind of final mechanism so that we don't have to keep running back out there.
We still don't have word from the neighbor.
Okay.
We still don't have word from the neighbor, that's the last, you know.
Yeah.
That's just out there.
That's what they have to address.
Any, any motion?
I'll make the motion that we that we deny this application, um and we provide a specific guidance to what we'd like to see going forward, okay?
Second that, second that?
Yeah.
All in favor? Okay.
I'm gonna pass my stuff later. Instead of it gets somewhere.
I just need uh specific guidance for what?
Oh no, the the thing that we discussed prior to that.
Uh. Oh, okay, so that's it, specific.
Yeah.
The all the guy.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Discussed, the specific guidance.
Okay.
Discussed.
As discussed.
As discussed.
If they, when they reset, we need to keep them with us, or will they have to.
You know, the.
Get the hall, hold it up here.
Yes, I definitely want a brand new application, all new materials, get rid of all the other.
Yeah.
Nice. Most people are ahead of that.
Right. Um. Okay, so moving on to number three. WP dash twenty-four dash zero zero seven nine, Land Tech forty-one eighty. Map seventy, parcel seventy-nine, determine existing part of a regulated area. Our public hearing closed November twenty, twenty twenty-four, and the agency, so I'll make a decision within thirty-five days, on or before December twenty-five, twenty twenty-four. Um commissioners eligible eligible to vote. Ted, Diane. Commissioner not present with. How is that possible, I just noticed that.
Say it again?
Bruce Lushay.
Bruce Lushay is not, oh, he wasn't there for eleven twenty?
He wasn't, yeah, he wasn't, yeah.
Oh, okay, I saw him, um but he's not here today anyway, so it doesn't really matter, okay, but the staff does not recommend approval pending discussion of the current application and possible permanent conditions? What is pending discussion of the current application and possible permanent conditions, please?
I'm sorry, where am I?
So we're, so we're on uh block rec turnpike.
Oh, alright.
Just my clarification.
So you don't. Well, so you you don't recommend approval, but does, but it says pending discussion of the current application and possible permanent conditions, like, does it say some other thing?
Yes. No, other than um my feeling is that uh all of the significance and. Um occupation of uh up on review area adjacent to a water course um with no room for mitigation. Would have adverse impacts on wetlands and water courses, so um that that. Or lack thereof stays the same uh from the original, but recognizing the fact that the you have to continue the discussion.
Thank you.
Mind me? What? You mind if I, well, hold hold on, I, anybody else have anything they'd like to add on this, and then we'll.
Well, you know, I just wanna, I I've learned a cackey whip, I I have been an um an educator um on on rivers, through mill river wetlands. For over twenty years, I sat on the board, I don't, I'm not an expert, but I have twenty years of experience, I've done, I've worked interagencies with deep, and I cannot express enough. The importance of pres- preserving riparian corridors and putting a twenty-foot retaining wall, you know, in a riparian is. Counter to everything the state of Connecticut is asking of us, it is um, you know, to, you know, if we, yes, the high hole. Is there and it needs more parking and I understand that, but they can valet park, there are other options for parking. Once we allow, we have the coverage of our riparian corridors in southwestern Connecticut is some of the worst in the state. And when you talk about resiliency and economic growth, resiliency are, it is, the state is now accepting the fact that. The fifty-year flood is now every eight point five years.
Yep.
The best thing we can do for resiliency is not build and wreck our riparian, like, so. You know, you talk about flood and erosion control, the best thing we can do is is to decrease flood and erosion, and the best way to decrease flood and erosion is to preserve, I mean. This is, I mean, really, a hundred feet is, when you look at science, is moderate, can really what you're looking for a riparian buffer, so.
Oh, different.
So that's, I was gonna jump in.
I I would say, from my point of view, I think it's illogical to interpret it any way that this wouldn't be detrimental.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Personally, it has nothing to do with what we're here to do, I would rely on the P A oh four two oh nine, which allows us to reach in on behalf of the animals.
Yeah.
I call that Avalon, um that's how I refer to it, but the trouble I have is um we fall short, in my opinion. When we think of due process, because the record doesn't demonstrate that yet, so that's how I feel, it should be rejected pursuant to Avalon. Plus, there's nothing in the record that would allow me to do that, but I would say that as it stands now, if I was voting tonight, I would vote for.
It feels bad as, you know, I understand what you're saying, but that's just where.
But I think that, you know, like what I'm saying is that, so I'm, in my limited expertise on the importance of riparian buffers, I'm saying that I disagree with their expert. Who is saying that it will not negatively impact, but everything I've taught NGSS standards, the state Connecticut standards that we teach to our schoolchildren. Is against building in a riparian buffer, so all I can speak to is what I teach, what I have taught from the state of Connecticut tells me to teach. What I, what the NGSS standards for the federal standards, for the national um next generation science standards, is that the importance of preserving riparian buffers. So that's all I can speak to.
But you have not asked for a third party to do it.
Yes, we could, but we can't, uh so.
Well, to me, my problem is it's, what I think is, I can't, I have the way I would wanna vote.
I have. That's nice. But I don't feel like I'd vote that way.
Right, I I struggled with this a lot, cause on a personal level, I couldn't agree with you more, and then we went to the cackawick thing, and it, every state in New England has a riparian buffer, will accept.
And it's before.
This is what I sit on this commission for, to protect it, this is why I got onto this commission, however, I also took an oath, I went down to the town hall and I took an oath, and the oath was to. To enforce regulations and the law, and that includes the case law, unfortunately, you know, I. I questioned their expert very carefully and I, and he stuck to his guns that there was no impact on this. We, should we have hired an ex- another expert? You know, everything's twenty twenty when you look at hindsight, but we are where we are, I think we have a very clear record here. Um if this was, I don't know if this would go to court, I don't know, I have no idea what they would do with it, but I think if it did go to court. Um we don't have any evidence, of substantial evidence to say that that we would have an impact on the wetland resource. That's personally the way I see it, so I don't like it, but I don't think, you know, I like to, I think that our credibility is alt is is key and that. We have to play, you know, as much as other people play dirty pool, we have to play clean pool and do do what the statute said. I, so I think to that extent, our our hands are tied, but. I, so I think to that extent, our our hands are tied, but we do have the opportunity to try to make the project as best as we can. Because I thought I went back, we didn't talk a lot about the mitigation and what things could be done to improve the situation to as 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 good as possible. And I think there's a lot to be done that that would improve the situation. For instance, if you look at his planting plan, there's many trees outside the area that would, um. That is supposed to be impacted, that be slated to remove, there are other areas where the trees aren't shown, that we certainly wanna preserve the trees. Um, I think that we wanna, you know, first start with trying to retain as much of the property as we possibly can on the property. And then make sure that there there's no incursion further into the buffer by strict uh con- construction notes and and construction sequences. And then also, um, I I think their mitigation plan is actually detrimental to some effect to this forest. Because you're going in there and and planting some of these trees and disturbing what is right now a very intact riparian buffer. So I would be if against that, I think that we could plant evergreen trees along the top of the slope. Reduce the amount of sunlight getting into the in there, and also, uh, that would help with some of the light extinction. And also, uh, when you plant the evergreens, you don't get as much light into the forest, so you don't get as many invasive species moving in. I think that we could relocate some of the, um. Uh, plantings that they show elsewhere and plant, use them for pollinator gardens in some of the the areas of the property and on the islands and also on the front of the property. Um. You know, I I again, I think the the riparian, protection of the riparian buffer is, you know, is most important. So we need to, they need to map the trees, show the trees to be preserved, make sure they are preserved, mark them in the field, mark the limits of disturbance.
Right, and any commissioners, I I I hear what you're saying, I'd love to see it in a motion. There's nothing wrong that said.
Come on, it is, I, I, I.
Nothing stopping you from saying.
Talking about conditions, right?
Well, I'm trying, and these are the things I think that should be done.
You don't know.
Jay, most of us here are on the same page, I think, so if it.
Oh, I'm I I'm not assuming that, so I I respect the rest of my commissioners, I'm just questioning my personal point of view, I would happy to.
Yeah.
Great, you know, I have this, I did it, Brian, I'm happy to write it to staff, I'm happy to reiterate the conditions. But I'm on it, I, you know, this is a motionable thing for me, I don't like this project, I have to tell you, I don't, and I would rather vote no. But I think that, you know, I then I'm just giving into my motions and not acting properly as a commissioner.
I have a question for for Jay, is it, is there a reason why, is there a a a reason why the wall retaining wall needs to be here? Why not revise the plan so that it's completely outside of the of the upland review area?
Yeah.
To him?
The upper review area is way up here.
I'm sorry, what?
Upper ground review area is way up here.
Right, I know, but I mean, it it.
They don't get any other, uh, parking. It's basically saying.
Right, but what I'm saying is, does it have to be here, could it, could it be brought farther?
The reason they're doing this is to get the double stack parking, so they're getting a line of parking here, they're getting a double line of parking here, and that's what they're doing in terms of.
Oh, and the roadblocks, okay, another one, okay.
If, you know, I looked at another, another option.
So if you took this away, brought this forward.
If you brought this forward and you had and just had a double stack here, you would, um, I think it would be a better plan. But you wouldn't really be getting any more parking.
Any more parking.
And this is actually, uh, uh, the their version of and, um.
This is a much better, much better plan than the original.
This is a world-class initiative, and it's a great one.
It's actually, they came back with a with a revised plan was a a step in the right direction, I was very happy to see that.
Right, so.
Right. Okay, so.
I just don't think they revised it enough.
Here's my other question, is there a way to do this wall that would be more ecologically?
Tiered or?
Yeah.
I worry about velocity of water.
Or something. But I I worry velocity, but I also.
And and erosion.
Or just another material, it's a different way.
An animal, if you look, talking about animal.
I asked him specifically those questions and he, you know, he, I I I think that's gonna be a problem, but he addressed them. I specifically asked those questions.
Yeah.
Um, you know, it's, I'm in a difficulty sometime, I I have to be his commissioner, it's hard for me sometimes to step up into that expert role. And I didn't feel like I I was appropriate at the last meeting, um, maybe I'm wrong. Um, you know, but we have to learn, you know, I don't think we let this happen again if we got, we would get an outside expert.
Yeah.
Um, but it kinda just snuck up on us, I didn't think this had any chance to be approved. I gave Tim a lot of questions to ask the applicant. Um, you know, I've asked the applicant at the meeting before, I I kinda held their feet to the fire, they did come back and they did, you know. First, I think the first submissions were lousy, but they did come back and they did address everything and.
And that's, that's their job, that's what, that's what they're there for, and then they present the information to us, we have to work off of it.
Right, right.
Uh, Commissioner Mahoney gave your bona fides for why you're discussing about the river and the riparian buffers, and that's great. Um, Commissioner Fane is talking about his, um, um, oath, which is also great as well. Um, I, but there's nothing stopping us from approving with conditions.
Right.
I'm thinking if we can add conditions to make it a better plan, I I've been trying to get them to not build it.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at Commissioner Fane's, uh, map, I I don't, I don't have a problem saying.
Oh, what?
I bet if we photograph it and we say.
Just give it to the staff.
Including the staff, but you know, I probably tried to iterate it.
Do you do you say thank you for the revised plan, not enough, can you come back again?
What's that?
Well, I think we're out.
No, I think we're out.
So we're out of time.
We would have to deny it at this point.
We've pulled.
Would, yeah.
No, we can deny or, uh, we can deny, we can deny for incompleteness, but I I felt that we, that 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 wouldn't be disingenuous.
It's either.
It's not like I. I think it's complete, I don't think, I think it's a complete, sub- submental, yeah.
I, that's why I said it, I think it would be disingenuous at this point, I think we add earlier on, it was wasn't like. They did add all those things I asked in the section, something like that, so.
I'd like to insert something and maybe this is too little, too late, but.
Yeah.
After the last meeting, um. I've really come to the conclusion that we were really quick to accept that there weren't any viable alternatives. And we did discuss some that we all agreed weren't really viable. Um, but during the last meeting, Mr. Carey said that their plan is going to cost in the millions.
Right, two million.
Now, I'm not an expert in soil science, but I am an expert in commercial real estate finance, which I did for twenty-five years. And I believe if that's the amount of money that we're talking about. Parking structure of some kind would be viable. And they dismissed that right at the very beginning. Um, I didn't realize what amount of money we were talking about here. Um, so I sorta missed that, but you know, again, at this point in the game. Um, I don't know if. Acquire them to do that.
Not to do that, they provided a plan.
Um.
We can make, we can make, um, wetland type of adjustments to the plan. You can't make them put a whole other structure there, you're talking about like a.
You're.
Are you gonna hear I'm saying?
Well, what I'm saying is, the regulations require an examination of viable alternatives.
And they did, they've 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 complied with that, they gave us one application of drawing in the beginning. They came back and it was a completely different plan.
Well, they just revised the same application.
No, it's a new plan, because it was a.
Well.
It's part of the same application, but they.
It wasn't a significantly different plan, it was just reducing the number of parking spaces somewhat.
They changed the structure.
If if we wanted to do that, we should have deemed this is a significant activity and asked them to prepare a plan for us to look at. We didn't do that, so that's that's on us, not on them at this point.
Okay, so do we want to, um, put together conditions?
Yeah.
I think they're already there.
Or.
You guys want me to reiterate what I said again?
Yes.
Um.
Yeah, a- as you can, if you wouldn't mind doing that motion with the conditions and then saying, as shown on map provided by Commissioner Fane.
Thank you for.
I I just wanna make sure, if you guys, do I need to get on the record tonight, or do you wanna call me tomorrow? I just wanna make sure.
I think we should put it on the record to record then.
Yeah. We'll write it down, we could circle back on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're.
Yeah. And so I I'm gonna make a motion. Um, that, um, the applicant has 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 done the burden of proof on this application. And, um, therefore, we need to approve with conditions as follows.
Yep.
Okay, um, I wanna make sure the disturbance limit line is marked out in the field prior to construction. I want the additional trees, uh, uh, that not shown on the plan to be, uh, located. And then th- those to be remained and those to be removed, marked both on the plan and in the field. Additional trees that sh- that are shown to be removed in the riparian buffer are to remain. Um, prior to any constructions, uh, staff should examine and, um. Make sure that no additional trees and that the the, uh, limit of disturbance is clearly marked and being enforced. The site monitoring during the, uh, actual. Removing of trees and, um, initial construction should be done on at least a, but, uh, twice a week basis. Um, an arbor should be consulted in terms of the remaining trees to make sure that they're being protected and 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 in good health during the construction process. And pruned as necessary pri- after construction to ensure their good health. The revised, the planting plan should be revised to move the plantings within the woodland areas. Um, where where they have the potential to disturb, uh, the existing soil and to, uh, introduce into, um. Uh, invasive species, the plantings should be relocated where possible with evergreens. Uh, plantings at least six to eight foot tall on the top of the slope, prevent light intrusion into the riparian area. The remaining of the plantings, um, for the property should be considered to be, uh, areas for pollinator gardens. Both in the on the existing landscape around the building and in the parking lot islands. Uh. There should be an ice built after construction documenting that the trees are remaining and that disturbance area hasn't been, uh, intru-. Uh, intruded into, the non-disturbance area has not been, uh, intruded into. And. I think, uh, I think that's, you know, for the most part.
Okay.
So that, let me just check, yeah.
I'd like to add.
You guys have, uh, you guys, you straight on that? I'll give you this plan also.
Okay.
Yeah, please.
I'd like to add a condition to prohibit the use of rodenticides and pesticides on property.
I think, um, from the, from a road, because the other road and problem, we have to use some kind of road inside, so we should make it.
Next to.
We've got a solution to that.
I do, you do, okay, so let's put, might include that as a condition.
Right, use non-toxic, uh, uh, rodent control methodology.
Yeah. So pro- I should say to prohibit second and third generation anticoagulant.
Yeah, that's.
So the rest will.
Well, we've already got the list of it going, so this is.
Uh, that's, anybody else have anything to add? And the the idea is that that this area, you know, the area that they said they're they're gonna protect, they need to protect. If there's any issue with that, they start going into the, this job, it gets shut down. I've asked them ten times, are you sure you can build this with the limit of disturbance that they that you showed? And they said, no problem, no problem, so if they can't do that, it's it's gonna be a problem.
Okay, so we have.
So was the citation train sufficient as to.
Was identified in that.
I I I said it be at least twice a week during, you know, while they're building the walls, and not more.
From what people.
So, Commissioner Fane, you adopted the consent of all, um. Um, language as well? Are you clear with the language? Are you guys clear with the language?
Yeah.
On the motion.
Want to add anything regarding the lighting?
Yeah.
Uh, I think you've done a pretty good job, uh, again, being consistent with the five.
I'll I'll be together with them, I have.
You've got the most of it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, if you take the five lighting requirements and ask them to include that as a condition, that would be great.
It's reasonable. Okay, so we have Commissioner Fane's. Map condition, we have the pesticide, perenticide condition, and we have the five points of light condition.
Exactly, okay.
So that is the complete motion. Anybody second? Commissioner looks in here, second to look. All in favor to approve this application with the conditions?
Right.
All around and all opposed, there we go. We have, uh, opposed, side, debate, and opponent. Yes, this by everybody else.
Yeah.
I'll give that, I'm recording.
Yes.
Thank you. I'm glad. That was a long one. Okay, good, good.
Separate.
Getting heavy. In your office too.
Alright, moving on to, uh. Building rule seven, bonds, bills and bond releases. Number one, I W P twenty nineteen dash twenty dash seven, Primrose Development LLC, fifty-five, forty-five Park Ave. Uh, demolish existing structures and construct multi-year apartment structure, parking and drainage from regulated area. Request of Lucas Papa George for final bond release of thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Staff recommends partial bond release of point seven thousand five hundred dollars, five thousand to be held for invasive species control monitoring.
We've done invasive species control plan for four years after planting with this one, um, they are fine with.
Everything else.
Yeah, everything else, and I told them that some needed, money needed to be held for that, and they were, there's no opposition to that.
Yeah. Is this the one behind the Tr- Triflute, no Sacred Heart Field?
Yeah, uh, yeah, yeah, that's right, you're, um, right past Sacred Heart.
That's the incident, that's the, that's right, you're. Yeah, yeah, okay. Um, alright, any, any commissioners, any questions? Nope.
Nope.
Any motion?
Okay.
Jay, Commissioner Fane, any second that, that's three in a row for Ted, anybody else?
He's on a roll.
Okay, Kate. Okay, spread the word. Um, all in favor?
I'm in, yeah.
Alright, everybody all around, yeah?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Moving on to number two, I W P A twenty twelve dash thirteen dash eleven. M T W Properties LLC, six hundred and five sixty-two, Boydens Lane. Subdivision construction within regulated area, request of Walter Stapleton for partial bond release of twelve thousand dollars of original thirty-two thousand five hundred. Bond for completion of stormwater detention system, staff recommends partial bond release of twelve thousand dollars. What's going on there?
Um, they're still working on the house, but the drainage system is installed and complete and inspected, um, which was a bulk of the bond.
Okay.
So they were asking for, yeah, part of that back, so work.
They're good? They're good? Okay.
So do they have it up structurally now?
Um, yeah, there it's partially.
Yeah.
Up there, like, they're still working on it.
Interesting, I have it up there a while, I never took it out.
Okay.
You can't see it from the road, can you?
I don't remember.
Far back, yeah.
Yes, 'cause it's, yeah, it's big, it's a big lot, yeah, yeah.
Commissioners, any motion? Release twelve thousand dollars. Commissioner Bowen, motion, anybody second? Commissioner looks in your seconds, all in favor?
Again.
Eyes, all around, yes. Number three, I W P, W P dash twenty-two dash two-two-six, Fitzpatrick Lane, Eighteenth Hubble Lane. Construction of a single-family dwelling with stormwater detention and subsurface sewage disposal system within regulated area. Request of Lucas Papa George for partial bond release of twelve thousand dollars of original twenty-four thousand nine hundred. Bond for completion of stormwater detention system, staff recommends partial bond release of twelve thousand dollars, and?
Same thing.
Same thing? Commissioners? Commissioner Bowen and Commissioner Fane, seconds.
I'll make the.
All in favor?
Right.
All around. And number four is I W P, W P dash twenty-two dash one oh six, Fairfield University. Ten seventy-three North Benson Road, construction of a new red residence hall, Regis West. With associated site improvements within regulated area, request of Walter Stapleton for final bond release of five thousand four hundred dollars of the original fifteen thousand.
Million?
Yeah, uh, so.
Oh, wow.
We can fix that as well.
Yeah, there's a, there's a, that's small, missing.
Yeah. So, we can, we can do, fix that, and of the partial ten thousand dollars, two, September twenty twenty-three.
Yeah.
Staff recommends the final bond release of five thousand four hundred, because?
Um, the plantings have been held for the two-year growing season and everything looks good.
Excellent, okay, any motion? Excellent, okay, any motion by Commissioner? Release.
No.
Ted and Kate. Ted motions and Kate seconds, all in favor? I am assuming with.
Yep.
Jay two, okay. And moving on to Roman numeral eight, legal enforcement action. Number one, seventy six country LLC, seventy six country road, map seventy six. Lot three three three, notice of violations issued to property owner for constructing a regulated activity in a regulated area without a permit. And.
This uh this one and the uh notice violation and um corrective action order attached. Uh this was the construction of an eight hundred square foot patio. And shed uh onsite. That was completed without a permit um within up on review. Uh with onsite wetlands. Um this property is adjacent to uh nine eighty High Street that we discussed tonight. Uh and the wetland system on this property is um hydraulically connected to the wetland system on nine eighty High Street. Um I met with the uh property owner yesterday and spoke with her again today. Um she's in the process of submitting a certificate uh. For a separate um project, so um she is um going to be combining. The corrective action with the uh new certificate application, um and status moving forward.
That is moving forward, okay. Uh can we just continue this and.
Yeah, so we go.
I mean, I saw a lot of communication, she understands, it's up to her to figure out the alternatives and what she want, what she's proposing. Correct, we had we had the discussion, it was positive, um the proposed A D U uh not related to the violation. Uh I was very close to the the wetland boundary flagged by Mister Kenny.
Yeah.
Yeah, about ten feet, um so I uh suggested that um there was one of those drawings to. Extend that distance, um and she is o- open to that, to moving it, rotating it or whatever. Um as well as stormwater detention to account for the A D U and the patio. Um and and the shed, uh and is open to um a planted buffer between the lawn and the well and so.
Wasn't ignored basically.
Right.
Okay.
She did submit the um document which I forwarded to all of you today.
Yep.
Um that kind of summarizes.
Yeah, it's just I I wasn't sure if she was looking for us to give a input, but yeah, that's fine.
No, she's uh.
No, it's quite it's um.
Since she couldn't um be here tonight, um that was kind of uh her.
Her being here.
Yeah, her being here in in writing, so.
Okay, perfect.
She acknowledges the violation, she's trying to.
Yeah.
And she's trying to fix it, so that's what we want, I mean, that's the whole point.
Yep. The exact opposite of what we got in the prior. Moving forward, um number two. Continued, Pilot House Special Needs, twelve thirty and twelve sixty Merwin's Lane. Map two twenty lots eleven and twelve, notice of violation issued to property owner for significant activity in the regulated area, permit. That I'm assuming that's one we we gotta go look at, right? We gotta set up time to go look at that, or is that something?
Uh it's just on here as a placeholder since it was significant, um maybe the the department hasn't received anything. Um formally as far as application, but we do know that they are working on it.
Okay, okay.
So.
Okay, so then we'll just.
Uh that's that's just again as a placeholder.
And number three is Grasso thirty rural book lane, map one seventy one lot. One A, notice of violation issued to property owners for conducting significant activity in a regulated area and conservation easement without a permit.
Same again placeholder, uh they've they provide me with updates weekly um as to their status of retaining professionals. So that's moving forward and not ignoring.
Nice.
Okay, um number nine is staff report, report from the conservation department. Uh A C W C permit, application for C four, notice of violations B issued five, C bond release eight.
Okay, um that one, just to point out, uh the most recent violations I did um attach to this uh agenda packet for. Uh for all to see, um. Uh bond releases we talked about tonight and and applications are uh remaining, I would say steady on the on the staff side.
Yeah, it's we're then we're flowing, which is good cuz then I can catch up on bond releases.
Little slow. Very good.
Um but uh there there are C W C bond releases that don't come to you also that we can work.
Gotcha. Alright, and then we have number two, site walks for December.
Sticking to Sunday mornings, uh next few are the eighth, fifteenth. Month or twenty second, twenty ninth. Are not favorable.
Nope.
I'm sure uh the eighth or the fifteenth, that would be Sunday, coming Sunday or the following. And that would be for um Sasko and uh Pettfield.
Yeah, just.
Put their bolt down. So um. You saying the fifteenth?
Eighth or the fifteenth, I'm I'm just doing a quick uh to be close enough.
Pretty much out for the month, so.
This, the eighth is, you know, one of the warmer days at thirty to forty seven degrees, uh.
It's winter, come on.
Yeah, um I I would prefer to get it out of the way, uh you know.
Wanna do the eighth?
The eighth. If that's okay with you folks for this upcoming Sunday.
Is it eight thirty, what time is it?
Ten thirty. We, well, that's why no one else is there when I show up?
That's alright. We we can do whatever time you want, it's it's just that whatever, do you wanna do?
No, I can't remember, what are we saying, that what we decided last time was at eight?
What do you need nine, we've traditionally done them at eight thirty, but nine is fine, nine is fine, you wanna do nine?
Did, so are we, did we decide whether or not we were gonna give them notice?
No, these are applications that they brought to us, we can go there. The ones that were, that was an issue was a violation.
Was a violation, I listened, we'll give her, we'll give notice.
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
Um.
Nine AM?
Nine AM, nine AM. Yep.
And you'll take lots of pictures later.
I'm probably gonna show up at eight thirty, it'd be a mall.
Okay.
Oh no.
Cuz I can't, I can't make it again this long, Sunday's.
Did you log the count?
Yeah.
Sunday's more show days.
You want? We just uh the notification down to the for the uh property owners. Got that straightened out.
For violations, yeah, for violations.
Wow, okay, so we put the site walks for December, um.
So for the Merwin's Lane one. The violation. If we, I can't remember last meeting if we decided whether or not we needed to schedule a site visit and give them notice or.
I think we were out.
We did.
Yeah, I might have.
The weather was a little rough.
Okay, so so the so the question was because of what happened when you all tried to go.
Didn't notice properly.
Was when there's a violation and there's the group wanting to do a site visit, do, should we? Do we feel like we should give them notice that we are coming? Uh or not?
I think that was, I thought that was decided just for violation.
Did we decide we, okay, just for, did we, did we did decide, I just didn't remember.
Just for violation.
Which is, which is fine.
Because if if they're under violation.
Yeah.
Try it.
Couldn't couldn't a line be inserted to the end of the document itself saying? You may need to grant access at some point, we asked to bring.
No.
No, but they had to give a warrant, you hate, yeah.
Yeah, we're 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 kind of talking about two different things, right? That's a constitutional level issue, right?
Right.
Some kind of application, they come to us asking asking for approval.
Yeah, right.
And if we never approve, we have condition part of that.
Well, I meant you 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 may be asked for permission, I mean, just as part of the general dialogue there.
Oh.
Oh, on the N O V, okay.
Oh.
Like a a line like, you know.
Yeah.
Good.
You may be, you may be asked to grant access, blah blah blah.
You gotta be careful on that, that's not by the town attorney.
Yeah.
Well, I think that they. Yeah, I yeah, I think you have to check with the town attorney because I think that there that there's a coercion.
Yeah, exactly, I agree.
Because they were talking about that at the um.
Kankey with me.
At Kankey with, that if if you insert something that makes it so that.
It's almost like they have to do it.
Yeah, that you're you're right, that that the town attorney has to look at the language very carefully.
You're like, oh yeah.
Uh it's taken conservative then.
If you if you then entered and they said, I really.
Helped uh put out that.
I.
Maybe we'll be doing that anyway.
Well.
Forget it.
So are we going to schedule something for White uh for Merwin's Lane?
If you if you'd like to, I think my opinion is, um since some of you are there. Um everyone else now that the views are down, you can see it from the road and I think that's probably the best recourse.
Yeah. Okay.
Uh yeah, on this one, I think we should just drive by. Okay, so you can see it, it's in the front, right?
I don't think it's been flagged yet or anything too, so if you're gonna do it, then maybe wait.
Oh, it hasn't, okay.
Yeah.
Until there's more.
Did they, didn't they say they're coming in with an ask, they're they're gonna participate, right? They're gonna do it.
They're trying for January.
Yeah. Okay, so uh it is what it is, wait till the application come, we're gonna be able to go out there anyways.
Great.
Okay. If they don't, then we move on because it goes from a violation to a um the.
Right.
Uh uh uh. Show pause, right, so what's. Yeah, or 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 sell.
Or took it right away to sell, that's weird, yeah.
There wasn't one.
It wasn't one, yeah.
Okay, um. Other, first one, the complications from the town of Westport regarding one seventy four Long Lots Road. Westport for construction of a new indoor racket facility and related.
I attached that, I received uh that notification since the activities within the five hundred feet of uh town line. Um this is at the Westport Hunt Club, I'm sorry, Fairfield County Hunt Club, Westport. Um I attached the plans, um. Uh myself, on behalf of the department is part of the Sasko Book. clusion abatement committee that's been around for a while, uh that meets at the Hunt Club that uh. With uh with their staff and the town of Westport and some others, um I've been there, familiar with with the area, but. Since it is hydraulically uh or adjacent to Sasko. Um that's, you know, I thought it was appropriate.
Real approach.
To pass this, pass this along. If the agency had any questions or concerns of this project. Obviously, it's being permitted through um Westport's co- uh conservation commission and.
Yeah.
Their inland wetland agency, but should this agency have any.
And you have the, you have the plan?
Yes.
I don't think I, I don't have to be.
Is it?
They're in the department.
They're kind of. Need the map on land by some T.
Was just not pickable.
Put on the cloud.
Okay.
Yeah. The back. It's a well developed and disturbed site.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah, I know what this is.
We work closely with them together with both towns uh on manure management, um and.
That's it.
And nitrates into uh Sasko. Under by.
They've been pretty good.
So little organics.
Yeah. We've worked on a.
They're very conscious there of.
Two years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
So I don't, I don't know if there's a an any, you know, specific timeframes of comments, but should the agency decide to.
No.
Represent comments, then I could pass those along to town of Westport.
Uh I'd just like to bring up one thing, I had an opportunity by there during the day recently, so I can't attest to this, but I was. Told that the constr- the development that is being constructed. Between the railroad tracks and the I ninety five north um Bronson Road. You know where I'm talking about?
Yes.
On ramp, but it doesn't have a silt fence around it.
Okay.
I'll double check that.
Like I said, I don't, I can't confirm that, but that's. What my friend told me, she said that she was really concerned cuz it's so close to the river there. That um she felt like there wasn't.
They have, that's a historic application, that's almost a decade old, so we have the right to enter for inspection, so.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Sarah can go out there.
We'll check that, I'll talk to the site monitor, because we've been getting regular reports, he's been out there.
Okay.
Um if there were any deficiencies, he would have reported that, so I don't know what area in particular.
Oh, okay.
Probably.
Doesn't have it, um but she said she was just going on the on ramp, but she didn't, so. Just thought it was worth mentioning.
Thank you, that's important. Commissioners, any other?
Quick question. Since we have a significant number of violations reported in this meeting. Do we need to maybe add a P S A to Gerber's, you know, uh weekly thing saying? If you're planning on doing anything on your property, check with inland waterlands first. Have people from having to pay a fine cuz they don't know or cuz the contractor is gonna do whatever they tell him to do? Is it, do you do you set the need for that or or am I?
Absolutely, and and I I raised the issue a a few months ago regarding um consideration of kind of a a P S A video. Um.
Call before you excavate.
Right, yeah, I think it, I think that.
With that, um I spoke with, and and I, when I brought this up, this was uh. Uh Alex, um who who did, since I brought it up, received Emmy for his work, um I think one or two Emmys. Um so he's legit videographer uh in town.
Oh, great, that's really cool.
Um. It's uh was gonna cost between seven and ten thousand dollars, um which is what it is, uh to get quality product. Um but we do, we have uh put out uh in the cold somewhat recently over this, maybe over the summer. Uh late summer, put out uh a flyer that was essentially a one page. Clear and simple call us before you do anything type of type of thing, that's on uh the main uh department homepage.
Right.
Um and and that was in uh one of selectmen Gerber's uh email blasts.
Okay.
So it is out there.
Did that go to realtors too?
It did go to some realtors and attorneys.
Yeah, 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 realtors and attorneys, that'd be good.
Um. Yeah, there was a handful that that went out too as well, um you know, whether it died in inbox somewhere, I I don't know.
Well, you know, work working one on one is repetition, 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 so maybe once a quarter.
Uh but.
We should have it included in Bill's outbound message just to start to reinforce the message.
We could certainly do that.
Needs to get to the contractors.
Well, that well, that was my next thing is, you know, a pollinator pathway, we've got, you know, our five nurseries in town that make it. Easy for people to get access to native plants. We come up with a list of contractors or people that we've worked with that are very familiar with the inland waterlands regulations and mitigations. Provide a list of, you know, um compliant contractors or.
I don't, I don't think we can do that.
Well, all com- all licensed landscape companies are, in in the state of Connecticut. Have to sit through land use and farm regulation, so they know the law.
Right.
So I think it's not so much, I think it's the, how they call them, the mow and blow are the ones that we're we're having. It but if you're a go to a nursery, the nursery can't say that they don't know the law, they absolutely know the law.
Right, well, it wasn't speaking nursery so much as contractors or everybody who's gonna do hard, you know, hard sc- hard sky, sky work.
Right.
Or in case of wakement lane would have been an ideal.
But like.
Yeah.
Had got all the resistance we got, had the, had the liability been split.
But.
But this is, we, but this gets back to our conversation about whose liability is it and how can, yeah.
We were talking about the Kankey.
Janet, and I had, and I had extensive conversation afterwards with Janet Brooks about this cuz I said, you know, our town attorney's in the past.
Just came up, right.
Had said, and I and I brought, I, when I, when they were talking about it at the meeting at large. I said, in our town, we tend not to cite the contractor, we just cite the homeowner because that's where we can get money for mitigation. And the room erupted, what do you mean you don't cite your contractors? So and Janet Brooks was very firm that we should be citing the contractors along with the homeowner. And she said, even though you're gonna get, and what's the, what's the other one? Mark, what's the other attorney?
Mark Branch.
Approached me afterwards and said, yes, it's you absolutely should be citing the contractor, even though um. First of all, it's gonna put them on notice that they're gonna get cited.
The word would spread, right?
And word would spread quickly and there is.
Well, it's bad news, so it'll end up in patch immediately.
And there's a a pretty big case, uh the Mellon case.
Yeah, it's in the.
Of case law where the very, the Mellon family had a, the the Mellon family. Yeah, I can't remember, does anybody know the case, it was like a year strip and we wanted.
Yeah, it's always a private airport in um on the war in Iantic and they cut down all the trees at the end of the airport and the land trust land.
Like our government.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, that sounds fair.
But what they said was that.
They cut less trees than the government, but it was a, yeah, it was a landmark case, it was.
And and the Melons were like, oh, well, we had no idea, and the and the, so anyway, the everybody got sight, everyone got in trouble. So the contractor, you move heavy machinery in there and you sit, can't sit there and throw up your hands and say, oh, I'm just doing what the landowner told me to do, but that doesn't actually fly. So that will be something the town attorney, we have to talk about, but that is something that, you know, if we start to see the same backhoe. Show up at different houses, you know, like I think, but but Janet Brooks also said the thing is that when you're talking about a homeowner. Who is hiring a licensed contractor, then you you we really should be citing them because you're, they're. you're, they're putting their trust in the expertise of that contractor.
Expertise is in everybody.
That's right, that's right.
And she's like, you know, and then to put all of the onus onto the, cause I said, you know, onto the homeowner.
Homeowner.
Well, and I think I always think about, I can't remember the.
I know, I know, I know, yes, yes.
Asian woman, who, you know, didn't, I'm assuming probably didn't have two pennies to rub together and
Yeah. Would would would.
I, you know, had tens of thousands of dollars of.
But she said, but she said that she's that she had that. I I think that it's something that that Tim could speak, the the staff could speak to the town attorney about about how that works or speak to
Yeah.
call Janet or whatever Burger, the, he was and he also, cause I guess, cause I asked the question, but that everybody who spoke to me afterwards, it's like, you should be citing that contract, you know, like.
I just, I always, I always look at the parallel of of electrical contractors or plumbing contractors or building contractors, structural, you know, engineers, sort of, they are all held accountable.
But Janet.
By the municipality in which they are given a permit and given a license to uphold those laws.
Janet Brooks said that they they can't say they don't know the law because she does, she teaches them the law.
Right, but if my house isn't wired properly, I'm not gonna get cited for it.
I think the problem really comes down to, and Tim can speak to this, the way that we, the the way that they're con- there's different levels of contractors, so there's contractors like that own a nursery, that's a, that's the farm and they're very, that's that's I think easy, that's a, but I don't think that's who's doing this.
That little guy at the pickup truck, it doesn't have a license.
Wakeman Lane was not some old guy with a bow saw and a beat up truck.
It's a. No, no, but but what, but in that case, we can, just like in the Mellon case, you can and you can't sit there and say, like, if she hired somebody and then she, you know.
That was massive. That's right.
The one that would have to give us that information.
So those other towns.
I have a feeling if you had told her the original V that your contractor collie with you.
No one would agree.
Or something like that, she would have been more than happy to.
But here's the other thing.
I know, how do we?
We we can get hundreds of N O Vs to individuals, right?
How do we?
But if if, you know, there are five contractors that are servicing those.
All of those.
On all of those, that would greatly reduce our load, right?
Protect the citizens.
And protect the citizens to protect the environment, because now you're really going to source.
I think that you need to speak to the town attorney about how to do this though, because I feel like, you know, they but they all felt when I was speaking, cause I
How do we fund?
as everyone that was sitting there could attest, I said, well, I don't understand, like, how do you get money out of them? I'm like, well, how do how does this all fit? They're like, wow, you just cite them, and I'm like, well, I don't understand.
Yeah.
I like the, I like the idea, I think we've talked about it in the past periodically, it comes out.
Well, not an attorney. I think you need to speak to the town attorney about, like, other towns are doing it.
So let's.
And there is precedent, in the Mellon case, they did get money out of the contractor.
The next couple of months.
With stuff, I'm thinking having a beer would be, talk to the town attorney to see what way we can incorporate into our bylaws or how, is it something we can do or is it gotta go to the town level? Um you know, uh where it's their representative town meeting.
It's state statute, they're they're breaking, so it doesn't matter if they're if they're in violation, it doesn't matter who's in violation, that's what they said, we don't have to.
Let our town attorney let us tell us that.
Yeah, we were talking about.
That's one, two, how do we, how do we, like.
How we enforce it?
Yeah, how, what's the mechanism? So maybe talk around.
Yeah.
Does the contractor care if I send them an N O V, like?
I don't know, we have to figure out other than that, okay?
So maybe just.
Um or.
But if you send them an N O V and then report it to Patch and then it shows up.
Well, I think the other thing is that I think, I think it's gonna depend on what, how they're licensed.
I don't wanna do that.
Well, I was just gonna say, maybe there's a mechanism.
We won't issue that license.
But maybe there's a mechanism on the state level that you can report the violations to the licensing agency.
If it's a, if it's a land, if it's a, if it's a landscape, if they're a, if they're a nursery landscaper,
Right.
then it's under some sort of farming, that's all I know.
Yeah.
But but like, I think Pete said, if it's just, you know, some guy in a truck.
Those aren't, well, those aren't the ones who are really concerned for that.
But I think that Janet really felt, she's like, if someone's got heavy machinery, they've got skin and.
I agree with that, that part I agree with.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
And usually that that's a huge damage, the guy with the truck in the lawnmower.
Remember on Wakeman Lane, there wasn't even any dust or wood chips behind, this was such a huge major.
Yeah.
Huge, but here's my question, what if there's, what if someone is, a contractor is building a house?
Contractor.
And they are in violation of a plumbing code? They get cited with that violation by the town of Fairfield, right?
Like a building can issue a stop work.
Stop, yeah.
Yeah. Stop work.
See, the problem is, it's somebody's already been, right? So uh somebody's building, cause they're, it's like the same thing with the.
We could issue something somewhere.
Right, cause they're already, yeah, right.
The amazing one we have with the.
Cause it is, it's named, right, so.
My life, we. What's his name, it revoked it.
Which is why.
I think we have a good attorney, I think our town attorney is good, he's got it.
Yeah.
Right, it might be a separate thing where you can issue a citation and 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 you know, they could, it's like a parking ticket, you issue the citation and they they have the right to either pay the fine or go or appeal to a judge, I think that's how it works.
Yeah, or.
You check with the town attorney.
And I I wonder if the state licensing agencies have some mechanism that's where you can report.
I think the maximum fine is a thousand dollars.
And they can, you know, if you get so many reports or whatever, they don't license or they might, I just said damages.
Look at them, this is for.
Can ask.
Yeah.
There was, I have that, I'll give you the case, they got money, but it was, it was, it will, I'll give you the case, it's very complicated.
And contractor. Yeah.
Alright, so are there others?
Any?
Let her brought it up, it's, you know, it's something that we should think about, because I hate to see it fall on, you know, residents of Fairfield, because they don't know.
Yeah.
You know, so let's let them know more often with a repetition standpoint, and with respect to the contractors.
Well, yeah. I think, yeah.
But something good could have come out. Everybody knows there's a wetland law, just a lot of people don't know they have wetlands on their property, so, I don't know if we have a.
Yeah.
Right, well, that's, that's the first thing, you know, if you live in Fairfield, Connecticut, you're probably on a la- a wetland or near one.
Wait, you know what, and the contractors show up and they're skunk cabbage, come on.
Yeah.
You you know that when you're seven years old and as well.
Right.
I know.
But see, I do think, I do think that there are people that don't, aren't aware of wetlands.
I don't buy any of that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely, oh, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Yes, I mean, I I think they think, well, it's just a puddle, you know, or just wet.
So.
Yeah.
Well, so so education.
Right, yeah, right.
You know, communication and education are things that would make it better for everybody in town.
And but I do agree, I think that we we don't wanna be like for me, like it it breaks my heart, like I'm like, oh gosh, like I don't wanna be like finding people if they really, if it was, if it was an innocent, you know.
We can tell way to way, we can tell way to way the innocence.
Right, that's what I'm saying, but like, but I do think that, you know, in the same breath, I think that we need to at the end of the day, we, there needs to be better education, and there are more mechanisms we can tools we can use to keep the wetlands from having violations in the first place, if we're asked.
Uh one of those tools will be your first fine a contractor. That's a tool.
Yeah.
And that and that will, that will work very quickly.
Like I know in in forestry, when somebody asks about an arborist, we have a list of all the ones.
But mostly arborists I work with know that they have to get it, you know.
The worst thing that can happens is is they say, well, I'm not gonna pay that.
But in in forestry, they can get it off, but they can have their license pulled.
I mean, most of the tree guys are just cut it and haul it away, they're not arborists, it's.
Oh, they have to be arborists.
See, a tree guy, it's gonna be an arborist.
Every tree guy.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have to.
They have a license.
But you're right, not all of them are, there are a lot of guys out there.
No, there's a lot of them, huh?
That's that's a big violation.
So, I don't wonder in my entire neighborhood.
And they sell, they I go go logs and then they sell the logs to that guy on the corner of uh Roosevelt and Rose Road, yeah, Roosevelt.
Bruce. But they were starting a fire room. Listen, guys, it's getting late, I gotta.
Yeah, yeah, we gotta go.
Alright.
Sorry, what, I'm sorry, are there others?
No, no other.
No, alright, then we are adjourned. Uh and quickly, I guess, we're gonna have a special meeting on the morning of uh December twelfth.
Yes. Yes.
That agenda is uh.
So.
Yeah. Oh, the.
Recording stopped.